This conference will now be recorded.
For the ninth, the Rome City Council will come to order. We do have a quorum. I'm going to start out with invocation Pastor Van Zant. Thank you so much for being here again, sir.
You'll bow your heads and close your eyes. Dear the Father, I thank you for this day and I think for everything that you've given us, Lord, I thank you for this city and effort that you please us allow us to have wisdom and understanding for what's best for our city. Lord, I pray that you'll please us to put a hedge of protection around our city elected officials, Lord, and I pray that you'll please us be with our first responders as well, and I pray that you'll put a hedge of protection around them, Lord, just bring them home safely to their family, Lord. And I'm so thankful for the government that we have here in the city of Rome. Lord, I pray that you'll please us allow us to have wisdom and understanding and divine approval as well as our city grows. Lord, I pray that you'll please us, be with us, bless this city, for this in Jesus' name, amen.
And we'll go to public comments. The council is not permitted to take action or, I'm sorry, action on or discuss any comments made to the council at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. However, a council member or mayor may make a statement of fact regarding the item, make a statement concerning the policy regarding the item, and/or may propose that the item be placed on a future agenda, or direct the city administrator to contact the individual to address. If you are attending the meeting via live streaming and you would like to make a public comment, you must email the city secretary@citysecretary@cityofrome.com prior to 4:00 PM on the day of the meeting and must identify each subject you plan to present to be recognized. If the writer of a public comment is unable to read their own comment, it should be given to a friend, a family member, or associate who is able to attend in person and read the statement in their stead. Public comments made in person require the speaker to submit the sign up form to the city secretary prior to the meeting, and the form must identify each subject the speaker plans to present. A statement of no more than three minutes may be made. There will be no yielding of time to another person. Comments should be directed to the entire council, not individual members engaging in verbal attacks, or comments intended to insult, abuse, malign, or slander any individuals shall be cause for termination of time privileges and removal from council chambers. What you got for us, Ms. Shayna Odom?
Okay, we have one speaker tonight, Lisa Wilson, and it's on thank you to the city, Easter egg, and the upcoming election.
Mayor and council, thank you so much for leading us. During the recent ice storm, many of our residents, myself included, were stuck in our homes, but we were fortunate to have the Public Works, Fire Department, and Police Departments to keep us safe. We thank you guys. We appreciate that. And I would also like to say thanks to Amanda for keeping us informed via social media on things happening in our city on a daily basis. This has gotten to be a chore for her, but we appreciate it. The citizens have been asking for transparency, and this is the beginning. April the first, 1:00 PM to 3:00 PM, the Easter Bunny and thousands of eggs will be in our family park. There will be a free drawing for several large stuffed animal and other things. A snow cone vendor will also be there with $3 snow cones. So hey, I think we got a good deal. Our neighbors to the west, New York, has two events coming up. A Valentine's celebration, February the 11th, that begins at 11:00 with bounce houses, food trucks, and vendors. Their Easter egg hunt will also be on April 1st from 10:00 to 12:00. We coordinated the times where kids could go to both of them. Springtime is coming, and in my humble opinion for the upcoming election, I feel that changes are needed for the governing body. At the last council meeting, we saw individuals that wanted to be considered for an opening on the council. There are many more out there that are also interested and could help our city move forward. Let's consider a change. I feel new blood, new ideas, and fresh outlook is warranted. We need citizens who are fiscally conservative and will put their heart and soul into getting our city back on track and reduce debt. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? No, ma'am. Okay, all right. Any other announcements from council? Good. Yeah, last week that was a homdinger for sure. Closed all week, and fortunately, we don't see it very often. Huh? Yeah, isn't that the truth? I'm a casualty, as a matter of fact. All right, let's move on. Consent agenda. We've got minutes of city council regular session dated January 26th. ACH return fee. I'm not really sure what that is. And the racial profiling report, but it's on the consent agenda. It's either yea or nay. Do you hear a motion? Make a motion to accept the consent agenda. Okay, second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Moving along. You might want to go back. We missed announcements. Oh. Yeah, I did. Missed the announcements, sorry. Filing has begun as of January 18th, 2023, with the last date of file for a place on the ballot being February 17th, 2023. City Hall is closed from 9:45 to 1:15 on Monday, February 13th, 2023 for city employee training. Coffee with a cop, February 18th, 2023 at 8:00 AM at the police department. City Hall will be closed February 20th, 2023 for President's Day. And we have another city council meeting, February 23rd, 2023 at 6:00 PM. All right. Monthly staff reports and board meetings, board minutes? Anything anybody wants to bring up in particular? Okay, all right, regular agenda. Number one, rifle resistant body armor grant program, and that will be Eric Debus.
Thank you, council members. What this is, what we're asking for is in an effort to keep our officers safe and at the same time save our citizens their hard earned money, we are looking for ways of doing that through grants. And this is from the office of the governor. It's a rifle resistant grant, rifle resistant bullet grant. And what this does is it would allow us to purchase body armor that will stop a rifle round. The armor that we wear now will stop most handgun rounds, but very few rifle rounds, because we just don't come under that kind of fire in our day to day operations. Can it happen? Yes, obviously, it's always a concern. But what these are, these are additional ceramic plate. And I'll actually say what it is. It's paraclete triple curved level four rifle plates that includes protection up to a .3086 and armor piercing rounds. They would keep these with them in the event they responded to a active shooter or a mass casualty event like that, an active threat event, and gives them that extra protection that they may come into into play in responding to that. And this is a 100% matching grant. We just have to pay upfront, and then we are fully reimbursed, much like our ballistic shields that we're working through that grant process. We just need your approval to move forward with the grant process. I've put on here that not to exceed $7,500. I think we've come up with it's less than $6,000, but I wanted to make sure if we hired an additional officer before this happened that we had a little bit of cushion in there. But again, this is 100% matching. Once it's approved and you guys say move forward, we would front the money, we would purchase this additional protection, and then the state would reimburse us. Any questions?
Does it include the rifle resistant helmets?
No, this does not include helmets. We've discussed helmets, and through experience, I think we might be able to get those through government surplus, but we haven't quite gotten there yet. This would include the the plates, which are actually ceramic plates, and the additional carrier. So what this allows, we wear load bearing vests, which takes a lot of the weight off the officer's hips and lower back. It allows them to put these plates underneath that in a response, or if they're wearing a Class A uniform like I have, it comes with the outer vest that they would just throw on over, like if I were to put it on, it would go right over this you.
And you already have this in the budget for the upfront?
Yes, sir.
Want in on this?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just as a quick, I guess, learning point of view for people that may be looking at rifle resistant, well, why don't we just get rifle proof? Or, you know, can you explain the difference between resistant and proof?
Well, nothing's proof.
Right.
There's no guarantee, certainly in life. That's why it's considered resistant. It will stop most rifle rounds, but if they hit you in the same spot twice, it may not stop the second round.
Don't they already wear protective vests?
We wear level three vests that stop handgun rounds. These would allow us to add protection in the event of a mass casualty or an active shooter. It would stop rifle rounds. Say somebody went into the school with an AR similar to Uvalde. This would allow the officer to throw these on as they ran in to give them protection and some form of protection, a resistance to those rounds.
Well, I think it's a no brainer. I make a motion that we that we approve it.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all so much.
All right, number one. Number two, organizational overview and projects update, and that will be Mrs. DeGan.
Thank you, Mayor. As part of my conversation with council at the January meeting, at the beginning of January, I was asked to put this on the agenda each month to provide council an overview of what we have worked on. Excuse me, Shayna pulls up the slide deck, so everyone can see. So in the realm of records management, I mentioned to you all before that we had begun the process of consolidating documents and pulling them not only Public Works, but City Hall. I have toured under the water station or the water tower, and we are putting all those in some sort of a organized format, and we are scanning them into our records retention system. The city of Rome is very fortunate that we have Laserfish as a program that allows us to scan those documents in, which also has OCR, optical character recognition, that allows us to search for documents if necessary, and we can set retention schedules so that as they're scanned in and as we are able to destroy the originals, because the electronic version will serve for the original, then we can free up some space. We can also help protect our documents from events that may occur should City Hall catch fire or one of the buildings. We want to make sure we've got those documents in the clouds so we can reproduce them if necessary. So I have started to review your records management ordinance. There are some definitions within that that needs to be updated and some processes that need to be updated. For instance, it mentions microfilming. We don't really do that anymore. That's back when I was in younger days in school. Now we're using electronic versions of scanning, and so I can bring that forward as an ordinance update. But there's also a need for records management plan that Shayna and I are putting together. We have pulled together some examples from other cities that have a much larger records management plan, and we are taking what we need out of it and paring it down for something that will provide for the city of Rome. As I mentioned, Shayna has probably scanned three boxes worth of documents, and if you think about that, that's thousands of pages that we're putting in. We have found, as I mentioned the last time, historical documents, warranty deeds, easements, and we're making sure all of that is in our system. So as we get those scanned and as we get them prepared, and the records management plan is approved by council, then I will want to seek approval to hire someone to shred the documents. Once they're in Laserfish, you're no longer required to keep the original. Now, for some that are historically significant, like the deeds I mentioned, or the bond, revenue bonds that we sold back in the 30s and the 40s, we'll want to keep those, because if we get a city hall where you want to display some of your historically relevant documents, those will be really neat to see. One of the other things we found was a photo of a gentleman. But apparently, the city of Rome used to haul their own trash in the 40s, and I found the photo, a very nice little eight and a half by 11 photo of this gentleman in an old truck that says City of Rome, and he's waving out the window. Those kind of things you want to keep and not get rid of. So we're segregating everyday documents versus things that we want to make sure that we maintain for the city. So that's coming forward as we move into some of the meetings in March. I was talking to Mrs. B. Kraft, and last week's ice storm kind of put us behind. I had hoped to have it for you all today, because we have about three tubs and three boxes worth of items that have been scanned that we need to start getting rid of. The budget analysis continues. I'm compiling budget history from 2015, 16 fiscal year forward to create that historical growth and that understanding of what has been budgeted and what has been spent. That will also allow us to forecast and predict expenditures and revenue over the next five years, which will help council make decisions that you need to make as it relates to funding either facilities that we talk about, water sewer updates, et cetera. But that has been quite a labor of love, finding some of those documents and getting into a spreadsheet that we can look at and move forward with. You have budgets. That's not the issue. They're in there, but the budgets themselves have much more detail in their line items than what's shown in your audit, so we're going back and we're matching threads to make sure that everything is in there as it should be, and it's going well. It's just taking a little bit of time. I'm still working with the consultants that you approved at the January meeting to come in and help us with establishing fund balance days and getting our fund balance in order, as well as setting those financial policies for council to review. They've had some illness on their side. We've had the ice storm, and then just scheduling conflicts has delayed that. I'm hopeful to have something set within the next few weeks. We are already talking about budget preparation for fiscal year 23, 24. Generally, you start that in March. Some of this pre-work that I'm doing now will help set the stage for the discussions that we start then. We're working with staff to identify any needs and again, looking for that forecasting data. Another conversation that I have had with staff is getting our CIP incorporated into the budget, your capital improvement plan, so that you know what major purchases are coming up, which assets that the city has, and that we can either start replacement programs for those, or we can start getting a clearer view of the next five to 10 years and what our asset management and what our financial allocations ought to be. I have also spent some time on water and wastewater review since the last time we met. Thanks to council member Schumake, we went down and talked with TRA, Chief Debus and I did. Was that Monday, sir? Monday or Tuesday of this week, we went down and talked with TRA. That's the Trinity River Authority about whether they could offer water or wastewater for our city. They do not have water out to us this far, and they don't have wastewater out to us this far, but they may sometime within the next five to 10 years, depending upon the regionalization of the cities out here and what the demand is. So we will keep that door open. They are currently working with Northlake and Justin to bring wastewater lines, so that's your sewer lines as far as 114 and 156 potentially. But it will depend on when Northlake and Justin pull the trigger on their projects as to how quickly they get it out here. That's still just for, I guess, a scalability. That's still 10 miles from where we are now. And it's an expensive pool to get your lines to meet up with theirs. They did mention that if we had some regionalization, we would have other cities going in with us that would lower our costs. So I will be reaching out to the new Fairview city administrator and talking with them to see what kind of things they have looked at and speaking with the Justin city manager about the same thing. So stay tuned. We will have updates as we move along. It's just, it takes a bit of time. The West plant pump issue that I sent you all an email on earlier today. We secured a temporary pump rental. The pump that we had on site failed during the rain, and we are awaiting a replacement pump that we will own, but we will keep the rental until we get ours on site and it's installed. The plant is functioning as it needs to at this time, but the guys did have to work until seven or eight o'clock one evening to make sure that they had everything put back to right. So there are some things that as we go along the conversation this evening and in coming months that we'll need to discuss as it relates to that West plant, because there are future development requests that have come in, or at least conversations that may affect that plant and its ability to provide services may be limited just due to the size and the age of the plant. So we're still working through that. Development itself, I talked with QT today. They have a few last minute items that we need to work on before they begin grading the site. The P&amp;Z meeting on Monday, I had a gentleman ask, and they are hopeful to start moving dirt sometime in February, but I'm not sure they're going to make that timeline just because of the ice itself and the lateness of the month, so it may be March. But I do have a meeting with them on Tuesday. We have had the developer of the townhome project reach out. We are waiting final engineering review on that before I can submit the information back to him. That would move that project forward. I have spoken to two different land brokers about property within Rome and the potential to develop on those. If anything comes up that is actually going to move forward, I will bring it to council. Right now, they're doing what I call kicking the tires to see if this will work. One of the land brokers actually has an owner that he's working with that owns three parcels within Rome. One is being looked at by a corporation out of Capel off of 114. Another one is the 12 acres just adjacent to the Loves, this side of the Loves. That person owns that one, and then they own this little piece here that's in the count. So we're continuing to see what might be available to us and what services we could offer them, so we'll see how that rolls out. One of the more interesting calls that I have fielded since I started here was from a company that wants to put in a battery energy storage facility. So think along the lines of batteries that take excess current off the electrical grid and store them in batteries, and then when the grid needs electricity, it pushes it back out to the grid. It is something that they had, those things have been installed in other cities. I understand from the Decatur city manager, they've had someone reach out to them as well about the potential of putting one of those in. They're looking at the property just this side of the power station or the substation that's up off of 287. And they are in the earlier stages of putting their plans together for that, but they are in the final stages of negotiating with the property owner. They will lease 10 acres of the 75 that's within that ownership development in that area, and we'll see if it actually comes to fruition. The RVR folks, I have talked with them, as well as the urgent care center. We're still working out some final details with this group. As I mentioned, the West plant is something that we're still talking with them about and whether we can handle their sewer flow from that urgent care center. And then the Walnut Creek SUD, as you know, that provides a good portion of our water, the majority of our water. Our longtime contact, Mr. Steve Harris, has retired as of the end of December, and we were unaware of that. But I have reached out to someone within the company and have a contact for an avenue to make that relationship a little bit stronger, hopefully, as we continue down this path. So any questions on this before I go to the next slide? It's been a busy couple of weeks. The phone rings a lot, and we've had folks coming in, and they're looking to see what's available to them out here in this area. I do think we, as I mentioned during several conversations with each of you, that Rome is well poised and very attractive to developers for the crossroads that we sit at and for just the general location of the city itself. And so if we can straighten out a few other things, I think we will continue to become a destination of choice for corporations as well as residents. So when I talked to you all in January, I brought some areas of focus to you that I felt were important, that we needed to look at as a council and as a community, and you can see that they're listed here on your slide deck in no particular order. I did kind of group them to the top three that I thought were important, and then the other three that could potentially come along as we moved other things forward or as we continue to have discussions. However, in the past bit of time, going back to what we see that's coming our direction, I have regrouped those. So as of today, this is kind of my priority order that we need to talk with council about. The issues as it relates to water and wastewater and the security therein is going to be, in my opinion, extremely important, if not number one, for the city to address. We have water needs that we need to make sure that we've secured past 2029 when our contract with Walnut Creek runs out. We also have wastewater needs. Our East plant's doing pretty well, but our West plant is well beyond its lifespan. And as I showed you in the slides or the photos that I sent you today, that plant needs to be rebuilt at best. I know that you all have talked in the past about bringing it up to TCEQ minimum, but as developers continue to come in and ask about expanding and bringing in development that we can add to our tax base, we need to have a service we can offer so that we can annex them into the city, because that's really how we will provide for our services moving forward. Our tax base cannot stay stagnant at the level it's at now. It's got to expand logically on a predictable schedule, so that as those developments and as that commercial hopefully comes in, we can add that to sales and use and to our ad valour rate, which will reduce some of the burden on our residents, because really, your general fund ought to be like a 60/40 split. 60% sales and use and then 40% residential or flip, depending upon how you, how much you have within your city. The more commercial that we bring in that makes sense for Rome, the less the burden falls to the residents. Corporations will do usually their AV rate, it's not their AV rate, but their values higher, and they usually bring sales and use tax with them. So that's two revenue streams that we need to make sure that we're capturing. So looking through the lens of the water and wastewater, that's paramount to getting fixed, so that we can make sure that when people come in and they they need so many gallons to run their business, we can offer it, or they need to flush 14 toilets, we can offer that as well. So that's going to be something that we've got to focus on over the next three to six months and make some decisions and start some things moving, because when you think about construction time, I don't want to have a developer come in and say, I'd like to bring, and you know I like HEB, but they're not coming here, but if they came and said, I'm going to bring an HEB to Rome, I don't want to have to say we don't have the capacity to serve. So this is critical, and that's why I have moved it to the very top of what I have grouped. You will see I have infrastructure, facilities, and technology as number two. You all have some facilities issues that have been discussed for at least the last three or four years, if not further back. And I will talk to you some more as we move into the next presentation about some of the concerns I have with the facilities and the I guess, the tours that I've been on and the issues that we find those buildings to be in now. Technology, we have some gains that we can make there. I'd like to eventually, not today, because it's going to take an implementation plan, move all of our staff to a laptop based program so that in the event of an ice storm, we can still continue to provide services remotely. Right now, we don't have that ability. So if we can move to something that's a little bit more aggressive in our technology, not only can we ensure that our documents are held well and being stored like they're supposed to and they're accessible, but we can also make sure that we can provide services, even if it's on a limited basis during an event like what occurred last week. Most of our desktops are older, as are the laptops, and we need to fold those into our budget, as I said, not now, but as we move forward over the next two to five years with a replacement schedule that makes sense based on our finances. So that's something that I have talked with our IT provider, that Chief Debus did an excellent job bringing them in as a partner for the city, and I'm hopeful that that will be something that we can discuss as we're moving forward. The infrastructure really relates to your streets and your roadways, and we need to get that folded into your CIP so that you understand how many streets, how many linear feet of streets that we own that we need to maintain, and those need to be on a replacement schedule, so that you have a predictable analysis of when bonds need to be issued so that you don't end up with streets in total fill. And these are all part of the budget, behind the scenes works that we're doing now, that we will continue to evolve over the next year to three years as we turn things a little bit differently and do some forward planning, if that makes sense. Any questions on either one of those? I'm sure a lot of this is not a surprise to anyone, not even residents, that's not a surprise. We've heard from people that had some frustration with the chip and seal on their roads and the deterioration and I understand that completely, but I think if we can get this on a schedule, it will help council as well as our residents to understand what's coming and we can plan for those needs as we move forward as a city, because Rome is going to continue to grow, be it within the city limits or in the ETJ. And we want to make sure that we have the tax base to provide the services that the residents are looking for. Make sense? So then moving through that, and some of these will kind of run in tandem, but the top two are probably going to stay there for a while. But when you look at your finances and your service delivery, as I mentioned, your budget development, we need to take that to its next iteration. When the city hired a city administrator back in 17, 18 timeframe, I think 2018, they began some work to put it in a line item format and then your previous administrator took that into a little more depth with some more explanation and now we need to turn it into a story. Doesn't mean that it'll lose the numbers, but you need to explain to residents what we're doing and why we're doing it, so they understand the benefit to them as a citizen and as a resident of the city. So that's some of the work that we'll be doing this year and as I mentioned before, that financial forecasting. One of the things in the capital improvement plan that I'd like to see us work on is identifying future projects that we are discussing but may not be funded, that will be shown on your CIP to give people an understanding that this is coming. Council's considering it, they understand that we need X number of streets redone, but it's in an outer year. It just keeps the needs of the community in front of people. So that's another thing that we'd like to fold in as we update the budget this year. Past that, communications and engagement. This is Wilson, thank you for the shout out. It was very interesting to keep Facebook updated last week, but I do think that it helped a tremendous amount and I think it dealt with some of the concerns that we've heard from residents that they didn't know in these type of events, what was happening with trash, what was happening with this, that or the other. I will say thank you to Chief Debus because the photo that you gave us of the 18-wheeler on the bridge had over 18,000 individuals interact with that photo. That's a lot for a little city like us. So it wasn't just on our website, but it got shared in other places and people were reading the story about what we were doing here in Rome. So that was good publicity for us. So those will move in tandem with the top two as we go along. Development projects, existing and future. I continue to work on getting a comprehensive database of what's required from us in our development agreements. We have some things that are deliverable to QT as well as RVR that we need to make sure we don't miss those deadlines and it needs to go out to all staff and to council so that you all know what those are. And if you have questions, you can answer those as it comes up from citizens and that we're clear on what those requirements may be as it relates to the city. I think there's a little confusion at this point. And then your comprehensive plan implementation, that was something I hoped we could have put closer to the top, but we really need to deal with the basics and some of these core items before. And you will see, I've kind of put it into a visual so that we understand that we need to build the pyramid from the bottom. And you will see that I have infrastructure and assets, which is your water and wastewater, your technology, asset management, the roadways, your facilities. We need to address those first, then moving into your finances and service delivery and ultimately into all the wonderful things that build a community. A lot of this will move up or down based on what we're doing, but this is going to be kind of the thrust of the work over the next, well, as long as I, I'll put it to that way, so two to five years at least. And then after that, we'll determine what we have checked off the list and what we need to move into after that. Does that make sense? Any questions on that piece? Okay. So that is the update that I have as it relates to projects, prioritization and just in our overview of the work that we have done. We're going to slide right into the facilities conversation. So I've done some work and your previous administrator had put some of this together through the work that was done on the bonds that were put out for vote in 2020 and 2021. The buildings that the city actually owns are shown there. You notice that you don't see the current city hall because that is something that we are leasing and we are very glad to have it. It's serving its function and it's serving it well for the time that we're in now, but you will also see at the bottom, I say this excludes water and wastewater. Those are assets that we need to look at under your utility fund because they are funded out of the utility fund. This is just your general fund monies and the things that we need to take care of on a daily basis. So this is a synopsis of going back to our pyramid discussion of priorities. I had been asked by a council member to put the facilities discussion back on an agenda and we need to get an action plan to implement these facility updates or get some direction from council as to which way we want to go. You can see that we've been discussing this, these are just the agendas I could find from 2020 and 2021 where this has been considered by council. The, the community forums are listed, the bond elections and the amounts are listed and unfortunately, the one thing that I can tell you for sure off of this is the costs that we see there have done nothing but gone up since the last time this was discussed. Most of you have participated in or been a part of these conversations over the years. I went back and watched most of the meetings and the reportings of council and the discussions, most of them on Zoom, that you were a part of them. That was, that was a long, long meetings that you had. And then in 20 and 21, the facility discussions came up, there were a lot of presentations by staff, there were varying concerns, options and opinions given on how to move forward. As you know, the first bond was voted down by the residents, as was the second. But I will tell you, since all this occurred, your assets have continued to deteriorate. City Hall rental is discussed and the leases in effect through November of 2024, but your police, fire, public works are a very high priority. Those buildings had a long list of items that needed to be fixed in 2020 or 2021 and many of those conditions have done nothing but worsened since then. According to the contractor that the chief brought out on the PD, that building wasn't built to commercial standards, it's more of a pole barn configuration. It's the metal roof on, it's not thick enough for someone to stand on safely. The fire department has a lot of issues. One of the things that struck me was in Chief Estes's report this week on the ICE event. Anyone who was working up here couldn't cook food for themselves during that and they couldn't take a shower because the showers are unheated and they don't work properly and they don't have kitchen facilities in the fire department. But yet we've got them up here working around the clock to some extent to provide emergency services and we need to address this in some form or fashion. That very well may be, but that place where they take a shower is not heated or air conditioned. It's out in the general Bay area and it doesn't have climate control. Public Works also needs upgrades to the interior and have an analysis of the roof condition. The meeting space for the community and the senior center is also a priority, so we need to consider those in tandem as to what we're going to do. I've toured all the facilities and spoken with staff and I'm looking to the council on some direction. I do have some recommendations for you, but it's, we need to come to some sort of a path forward and what that would look like. So going to next steps, one of the things that council could consider is a facilities committee where you could appoint four individuals who are not part of council that are residents, a council liaison and a staff liaison to do an analysis. It wouldn't be a deep dive as to having a structural engineer come out or having an RP ready to be put together, but they can provide you with an overlook of the facilities that the city owns and can help be a voice for any action that council takes to upgrade them or rent something for staff to be in so that the community can understand the conditions. I think that's very important. We could also then have them put together a report to council. There could be decisions on either leasing buildings or decisions on building buildings or repairing buildings to some extent. And there should be a bond package discussion, whether it's a GO or CO, there are going to be time limitations on that because of the previous bond in 2021 that was not passed and there'll be some things we need to check with Mr. Adkin on. Then we need to look at that budget analysis and then we have to educate our residents so they understand why this is needed. The burden will fall to not only your citizens, but your commercial development that will come in over these years and we need to make sure we have the facilities from which to serve. So we've done a little preliminary research. As I mentioned, I know this has been something that you all have gone and reviewed multiple times, but I can tell you that the police department and the fire department probably ought to be condemned. So I'm looking for direction.
Well, I know we discussed previously and you also mentioned at the facility review committee, I think that would be a great idea. As we saw, most of us have been here for, we've been discussing this for, as long as I've been here since 2018, trying to figure out what to do with these buildings and what to do. Never really went over well coming from the council, so maybe coming from citizens, it'll be taken a little bit better. I know we had several people apply for the recently opened position, I think would be great candidates for that committee. They all had great qualifications and different backgrounds, so maybe if we could reach out to those people to be on that such committee. But I'm all for setting up a facility committee and bringing back some information, you know, they can take it out to the people and see what they want to do and find some other ideas that, you know, maybe they can put a little more time in than we can in a couple of meetings on, so I think it's a good idea.
As long as we're talking about facilities, I went back and looked at some minutes, February 24th of last year, there was a discussion, actually it was brought up by Mrs. Priest at the council meeting for the renovation of the city property on First Street and they were talking about seeking a grant writing company to investigate funding. I don't know how far that's gone or what we can do as far as getting grants.
For facilities, we won't have a lot of grants available to us. You will for water, wastewater, purchase of apparatus, things like what Chief Debus is using at the police department, but most granting agencies feel like it is the responsibility of the city to provide for their own facilities. I can say that. I'm happy to ask Grant Works about it. I know there was some lengthy conversations about rehabbing the old city hall for its historical value.
Yeah, that's what I was talking about.
And I will tell you, I think we ought to try and maintain our historical value of our buildings. I don't know what that looks like, but once the history's gone, you cannot repurchase it.
Well, if it were renovated, you'd get it.
You could, you could even. Correct, you could rent it out to someone and it could be a revenue stream for the city. We could determine what assets might be worth selling. The police department is in prime commercial area. At some point, that might be something that you want to look at, but all of those avenues need to be explored sooner rather than later. Yes ma'am?
I would just like to say that as we look at what Ms. Mitchell brought up there, we ran into two obstacles which really haven't changed. In order to get grants to do with cities, especially through our, the government, the amount of income of our city, people that live here.
Median income?
Is not, back when we first started looking at was, I think it was 91. something or 92%. And then when I, we were waiting on the 2020 census to see if we couldn't get below that 90 mark, which qualifies us to be able to look at those kinds of funds. But no, we were at 90 and when the 2020 came out. And so that prohibits us from applying for some of those really fine grants that you see, some of our neighbors like Bridgeport and some other entities, because they don't have that salary standard that keeps them from making them. So then we reached out to the grant writing company and we talked to them specifically about the original building on First Street. And the problem that we ran into, it was what they call community development funds, was that we didn't have anything to match with them. And so the, the grant group has been looking and looking and every time they would find something that looked might, like it might have a possibility, then when they get into the, into the meat of it, then we weren't going to qualify. And so the city, you know, always was voting down anything that we put out there to try to get fixed and that's what, that's what the community grant was expecting. They were expecting us to understand that it wasn't just the building, we had to make sure the outside was correct. There had to be sidewalks, there had to be drainage, there had to be access for the handicapped to get in there, which meant that everything that was to the outside was going to have to be jackhammered out and, and then rebuilt. Another thing was the parking in that area. So we ran into roadblock after roadblock. And when we have a building that, yes, we want to preserve it historically, when every other building that we have where our staff is and we can't seem to deal with that, that couldn't be a priority, even though we were trying to look for anything for any building. And so it's been a situation where Rome doesn't want to spend any money, but that's not how it's going to work. And so we did, we tried, we tried and we, and Grant Works has repeatedly looked to try to be helpful.
And I don't, I have no issue reaching back out to them, finding out what that may or may not have changed and if, to the mayor's point, if our median income has come down and now we're in a threshold for that, that's not an issue to do any of those. I will search for every free dollar we can get for those things because that's just less money that we have to pay from either our sales and use or our ad val rates. That's just how I budget. But we are going to have to make some decisions and if you have some folks that are independent, not only are they working in tandem with council, but you are creating those future leaders of the city as well and they can help educate residents who have questions because there's only so much the six of you can do at a given time. So we just need some direction on how to move. It's multifaceted, but we need to do something quick.
I remember many of the discussions, it's always been an opinion of the majority of the council that we do refurbish the old city hall. However, we have buildings where employees are working in and by local, state, federal laws, we have to provide a safe workplace for employees and at this time, we are not doing that. The only safe workplace is the current city hall. So I don't remember exactly when it was, but we listed out what facilities we need to focus on first and I believe number one was the fire department because there are individuals that do sleep overnight there. And then the police department and I believe third was the public works office. So that, that's where all the discussions were in the past is yes, we want to refurbish everything, keep the old city hall, but we have to take care of our employees and put them in a safe working place first.
So I understand that there may be a possibility of some property with RVR. I at least heard rumors of that. I can't find any documentation on it, but is that what you all recall from when that conversation was had? So there may be an opportunity to leverage a public-private partnership in that regard and I'm absolutely happy to seek that out and see what may or may not be available to us. I just need some direction.
I, I agree with you. I think that as a city council, you know, the, the three of us that have been here for a while, you know, we, we don't, I, I'm, I'm at a loss of everything I know to do and consider and, and shook every bush that I knew and got files everywhere, but that doesn't make any difference what, where, where, where we are today and we have to. And so I agree that we do need, and I would appreciate what the four citizens, as you have recommended on that committee, anything that you can think up to do that's creative, any tree you want to shake, you know, I, I just would love to see that.
Well, I will shake them all and I will evaluate with your financial advisor and your bond council. You have a couple of bonds that are about to roll off and be paid and so we may have some room in there that we need to determine what does that look like? As there's growth in your tax base, this might, this might almost be a net zero issue depending upon what the tax base does. But if we don't fix the water wastewater and we can't offer that service, then these folks can stay in the ETJ and not pay city taxes in perpetuity. then these folks can stay in the ETJ and not pay city taxes in perpetuity. And we have got to expand that tax base in order to be able to provide the services that we want, the parks that we talked about, the ability to have a place for the community to gather and hold events and visit, be a community. Those are the things that were brought out in your comp plan as important to the residents. Those are the type of things I have heard, and we've got to start making some strides forward in reaching those goals.
Well, I think as far as providing direction, I think we're all in agreement with creating a committee. If y'all could reach out to those individuals that recently applied for the open position first, see if they would be interested, and then go from there on soliciting volunteers. Who from staff would be representing staff?
That would be me.
Yep. And then so who from the council would like to represent the council?
I would like, I'd like it to be one of the newer ones, if they're a willing, because there's a lot of history here, there's a lot to learn. There's a lot of ins and outs, and so it takes a while to learn that history and understand it all. So, and you guys aren't up for reelection. And so it would be, oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I made my mistake. But I'm just saying, it would give you the opportunity to learn. And I would love, I would love to see that happen.
Plus, I think the three of us are out of ideas on facilities, so maybe some new minds.
I do think that you should talk to reunion and find out about that also.
I like that part of it. We've had some preliminary conversations, and I just would like to see what's available to us in that regard, because that would be a great benefit to RVR if we had that five acres on that side where police and fire could have a new home. But it also gives, still gives good access to all the community through that lens, and that's, response times, we want to make sure are still great. And so once we can have those discussions, I'm happy to bring them back to council.
Make it quick. Okay, I remember back when they were doing the budget thing or whatever it was they were doing. There was a type of grant or type of bond that the citizens didn't get to vote on that was strictly for the West Side plant. Where does that stand?
That's our utility fund, and that's different than what we're talking about.
But wouldn't that fix our wastewater, our West Side?
That was used on the East plant, the bond that was 2019.
No, they discussed what they call the revenue bond.
No, that was for, what I understood, $1.5 million?
No, it was for five points, started out for 5. something, and then it went up to 5.9. That was done probably a year ago last summer?
I'll have to check. I know I spoke to the city engineer, and he said it was 1.5. But the cost that had gone up on that plant.
It's not 1.5 anymore. It was 1.2 when they talked about it.
Either way, talking with Kyle, that only gets you to your minimum TCEQ requirements. It doesn't do anything for capacity.
Well, he said that it could be done for 1.8, just the minimal, and then if you wanted to redo the whole thing, it's going to be 5.2. And that was a revenue bond that council had approved. I can, I can find it.
So we did approve it, but then all of this happened with the, the costs of everything coming, going up, inflation, couldn't think of the word. And then that went above what we could pay for with just wastewater raises. So he gave us three options for the water. We chose the lowest one because the wastewater was so high. We chose the lowest one that was only going to cover the minimum TCEQ violations. That was it.
I don't know if that answered your question, but that's mainly what that was used for. No, ma'am, it's, it's not lost. Mayor?
Thanks. The CBDG grant that we got two or three years ago, when we first looked at it, it looked like we did not qualify for it because of the medium salaries. We went with Grant Works, they took it all, they kind of led us through it hand by hand. They actually limited the location, and they knocked on doors and determined certain salaries, and we turned out for that physical area or geographical area to qualify because the salaries were less, so we might want to keep that in mind. It's my understanding you can't get one of those but every three years, but hey, we're getting close. So that's.
All right. You got the direction? Can we move on? Okay, thank you. Do we have anything for executive session?
All right, motion to adjourn. She just needed direction. She got it. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second? I'll second that. Who seconded? Thank you. And all in favor? You know what? They haven't had any ice cream for the last, since before, since before the ice storm. They've had no ice cream.